Who knows?
I guess they got Northwestern on their schedule next year, huh?
They'll win that.
That'll be interesting.
They'd probably be five and five in the Big Ten. They'd probably be a 500 team in the Big Ten. They'd beat two Big Ten schools this year.
Okay. Where were we? I know, I know, I'm only kidding.
Number five.
Let's move to item, welcome to our city council meeting. We had a little bit of a problem with the video, but we're back on our scheduled meeting. We're on to item number five, questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have anything they'd like to mention now? Otherwise, I will leave it open to the city, to the audience that is here this evening. Is anyone in the audience, does anyone in the audience want to speak to the city council about, on any issue? It does not have to be just items that are on the agenda this evening. Okay, then let's move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes here tonight. We have the November 13th goal-setting session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any discussion? Yes.
Typo or correction? Under Cass Avenue and 75th Street Development, the second sentence, all aldermen asked, were in favor of demolishing the rebuilding two buildings, so in favor of demolishing and rebuilding two buildings?
Noted.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that set of minutes? Then the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The goal-setting session minutes have been approved. The next set of minutes is from our November 18th city council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Marques. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Alderman Belkey?
I have a correction. The last sentence before adjournment. It's talking about the Bond Field Scholarship District, High School Districts. If you can change District 203 to 202?
So noted. Anything else? Any other additions or deletions on the minutes? The roll, please. Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Let's move on to the mayor's report. And I'd like to read the mayoral proclamation this evening under item A, which is a mayoral proclamation for drunk and drug-driving, the 3D Prevention Month. Whereas motor vehicle crashes killed 956 people in Illinois during 2012, and whereas hundreds of those deaths involved the driver impaired by alcohol and/or drugs, and whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving, and whereas for thousands of families across the state and the nation, holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost, and whereas organizations across the state and the nation are joined with the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired driving law enforcement efforts, and whereas the community of Darien is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and other traffic safety groups in that effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I Kathleen Weaver, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim the month of December 2013 as drunk and drug-driving 3D Prevention Month in the City of Darien, and do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, and healthcare providers, schools, public and private institutions to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving, and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year. This does not require... Next, the next item under the mayor's report, I'd like to invite Deborah Darsinski. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, I skipped the skis at the end. Deborah, Deborah Darsinski, she's the executive director of the DuPage Housing Authority. I know we had a number of questions for you because we happen to be the home of the Myers Senior Housing Development, but welcome, Deborah. Yes?
Thank you, I brought some business cards, you could just take one and pass it down. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Deb Darsinski, and I've been with the...
Deb, could you talk into the mic? I'm sorry, it's twisted.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Everybody at home will hear you better. Thanks.
Okay. Anyways, I've been with the Housing Authority for about 16 months at this point, and our program is, the mission of the Housing Authority is to help provide safe, decent, and affordable housing to persons who are residing within DuPage County. The program is called the Housing Choice Voucher Program. It is funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and monitored, and our rules and regulations come out of that organization. There are two types of vouchers that are provided by the Housing Authority. One is a traditional housing choice voucher, which is given to an individual who qualifies for the program, and they can take that voucher and they can lease up with any landlord in the county who has property that is willing to meet the housing quality standards, as well as accept the rent limitations that might be applicable in an individual case. The other type of voucher is called a project-based voucher. In a project-based voucher, the difference is that instead of the voucher staying with the individual as they move from house to house, the voucher stays with the building so that the next person in who qualifies will have the opportunity to have the subsidized rent. So that's the kind of voucher that applies at Myers Commons. It's the project-based.
Okay, so does that apply to each one of the DuPage Housing Authority developments? Is each one a different type?
We have a number, we have about six, six or seven project-based programs throughout the county, and the remainder of our, the vast majority of our vouchers are individually granted to an eligible person.
To an individual?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All righty, I know that there's been a great deal of turnover.
There has.
In the DuPage Housing Authority, I think Dan Cronin just asked everyone that was on the board to step down, and you have a brand-new board. And who is the director of the Housing Authority now?
The director of the board?
Yes.
The director of the board is Thomas Good, who's a lawyer who practices in Wheaton. So, you know, kind of the history...
He happens to be a village attorney, too, for a few villages, too, doesn't he?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, the Housing Authority had a series of audits by the Office of the Inspector General that happened between 2009 and, say, 2011. And in those series of audits, a number of issues were identified. At the final end of it, I think that Chairman Cronin felt that new direction was needed at the Housing Authority in order to restabilize the program, ensure that the goals were met, et cetera. So at that time, he made some changes. The Housing Authority went through a series of interim executive directors as they were trying to seek leadership and, at the same time, respond to these, the corrective actions that were required. At this point, we have been successful in addressing the Office of Inspector General issues. Many, many of the procedures and operating policies of the Housing Authority have been changed. We've upgraded software, for example, to make it more integrated so that services would flow from the client into the finances, into HUD reports, so that we can have much greater reliance on the accuracy and effectiveness of the services that are provided. We no longer get different numbers, we have one number. So it's all, that part's all good.
Okay, I know Alderman MacIver has some questions for you.
Politics and computer glitches and accounting things aside, this came up because a resident, in my ward, and I have quite a few seniors in my ward, inquired about the, specifically about Myers Senior Housing. And that property was just, we went through the approval process, actually, just as I became an alderman. I was there for the groundbreaking ceremony, it happens to be in the ward that I serve. And I recall very clearly that as, when they were presenting this facility to the City of Darien, that we were specifically told that that would be available, you know, for Darien residents, that they would be, you know, if there's a waiting list, that they would be at the top of the waiting list. And, you know, I really didn't have, think about it much more past that until the time came for me to actually inquire about exactly what the procedure is. And first of all, there was the frustration of just trying to get information from the DuPage Housing Authority for senior information. It turns out there was some kind of a list you could get on, but it was closed already by the time I called for housing facilities, apartments in DuPage County. I don't think the city ever knew anything about it or advertised. There's things that are out on computers that seniors aren't necessarily, you know, the most avid computer users. Local newspapers are no longer around like they used to be to inform seniors of what they can do. And I was told specifically that the waiting list, if it was open, is seven to eight years. Well, that means a senior probably needs to start planning for their future in a potential facility pretty far in advance because seven, eight years for someone who's, you know, about 80 years old, they may never get that apartment in their lifetime. So, you know, after all this frustration, phone calls, messages, I think that you were the only person, actually, who called me back. So I appreciated that, and I thought it was an important topic for residents in Darien to understand what is available to them. I mean, they've been paying taxes into the Housing Authority, their whole, you know, their whole lives living in DuPage County, and then suddenly, if they need a service, that service may not be available to them in their lifetime. And I thought that was very frustrating and not very good news, actually. So I felt that it was important for there be some kind of communication to the senior, especially the senior residents in Darien, or those who have parents who are, you know, who live in DuPage County, to understand what they need to do, how far in advance they need to do it, what they should be, you know, is there a mailing list? Is there some kind of an information flow to let people know when things are available and how they are to, you know, what they need to do to apply and what, you know, how are they eligible? Because none of that information was readily available anywhere. And I thought, I'm like, this is terrible. You know, if someone... All right. Do we have someone with a laptop on or something?
No.
Or a phone? So I felt like if people, you know, that have resources can't find this information, how is a senior possibly living alone who has no way to tap into those resources ever going to find out what's available to them?
Okay, let me try and address some of the issues. First of all, I want to clarify one thing. The Housing Authority is not directly funded by taxes. We are not a taxing body, and we get no direct proportion of anybody's taxes. Our funding comes from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. But nevertheless, I'm also kind of a neighbor. I live over at Bruce Lake, and so when the project was being discussed, I also attended some of the meetings and definitely heard the same thing that you're talking about. However, as we found when the Office of Inspector General came through, some of the ways that the Housing Authority at that time was administering the waiting list was not compliant with federal rules and regulations. When the project first opened, all sorts of individuals from the community were allowed to sign up, and Myers Commons had a lengthy and extensive waiting list that we just recently finished going through. So everybody that was on that original waiting list, who was from Darien, was called and offered an opportunity to move in to that situation, at least, at least once. Most of the last, the end of the list, because of some of the things that were going on at the Housing Authority when I came over, we actually recalled a number of people who hadn't responded or had said, "Not now, maybe later," or whatever. So we recalled them to make sure that everybody was cleared through. So we got to the point that the waiting list for that project and for some of our other senior, our other project-based units, needed to be opened up. So we did that starting June 3rd, and it, then it closed up at the end of September. That may be able to be opened again because the length of the waiting list for the project-based just isn't as long and as extensive as it is for the regular HCV program. The HCV, the regular housing individual vouchers, the last time that waiting list was opened was, I think it was 2010. And at that time, they received forty-some thousand applications, of which, through a lottery, a number were selected. We still have roughly a little under 4,000 people on that list. So there's no doubt that not only in DuPage County, but across the nation, the need for subsidized housing far outstrips the supply. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is not well-designed to respond to immediate need. I personally think that's a challenge for the programs. It's one of the reasons why, if any of you have heard of things like a VASH voucher, has anybody heard of those? Those are Veterans Assistance Supportive Housing. They've, the VA, in combination with HUD, has developed that program in order to be able to respond, for example, to vets who are coming back from, you know, there's assignments, and they may wind up needing housing assistance. As I've said many times, you know, kids don't, say at 13, "Gee Mom, would you bring me over to the Housing Authority and sign me up for a voucher? Because at 23, I might be getting out of the Army, and I could need subsidized housing." People, it doesn't, it doesn't happen that way. The majority of people that sign up when there's an opening for, you know, a waiting list either at DuPage or another housing authority are people who have some ongoing knowledge that they will need long-term support. So for example, people with disabilities, people with, you know, some intellectual problems, people who have had long-term poverty issues in their world will sign up. People who are, it's all going well, have a tendency not to come and sign up. They can't even imagine that at some point down the road, they might need that. And I think at times, that's kind of what can happen with some of the seniors. Although, when Myers Commons first opened, obviously, a lot of people were thinking ahead. A lot of people did sign up. When it comes to us, now, the people who are eligible at the Housing Authority, not only do they have to be a senior, they have to be 62 years or older, but there's also an income issue to be in that project. You have to be at or below 30% of the annual mean income, which means for a family of two, after an adjusted, you know, look at your income, you're talking about an annual $17,700 a year. A fair amount of the seniors in our area here are just going to have more assets than are going to make them eligible for a subsidized unit, which doesn't mean that there's not other senior units that they should be considering in DuPage County. And that would be a place for everyone to kind of help them understand that they should be calling Senior Services at DuPage County. It provides case management and a lot of direct services and information to seniors in terms of helping them to find appropriate housing or supports that they might need as they're progressing from living in a home to possibly needing assisted living, maybe they just want to be in a retirement community. There's all sorts of different options that are available, and someone through Senior Services is far better at being able to sit down with them, help them evaluate their family circumstances, and the types of supports that would be right for them. Right now, we have a waiting list that's open for our facility that's called Ogden Manor. It's in Naperville, close to Naperville North High School. Right now, their waiting list is open, and if individuals are interested in that type of a setting, they can, they can sign up and get on that list. It's not an extensively long list at this point. It just reopened, so I know that they are, you know, actively seeking names.
Until what time, what's the date when that closes?
Right now, there is no date for it to close. So for, you know, until further notice, it'll be open, and they're expecting it to stay open at least the next two months.
It is, when does a waiting list open up? When the previous waiting list is diminished?
Yeah.
Or exhausted, I should say?
It's an individual decision, but basically, what we do at the Housing Authority is take a look at, does it make sense now to open it up because there's a reasonable likelihood that if you get on a new list, you're going to get housing within a reasonable period of time? Kind of what Sylvia was talking about. We don't want to open up a list if it means you're going to, it's already six years, and you're going to be five years down the road. So we waited for the seniors and the project-based list until it had been pretty much diminished. Then according to our regulations, we had to take a look at our regular HCV list, and anybody who was potentially eligible, so they were all over 62 years old, they were called to say, "If you're interested, you may be eligible for this type of housing." A number of them were not interested, didn't want to move at this time or whatever, so we depleted that whole list. Now we're on to the new project list, and we'll see how it goes as people accept placements. We, you know, at Myers Commons, I bet you we, maybe, maybe two or three, even five, five new placements every quarter? So maybe 20 people a year?
And how many units are there?
There's 91 units.
91, okay.
So it, it really is, it's chance, is there somebody that wants to move? Is there a reason why they need to move? And our job at the Housing Authority is to provide them with reasonable eligible referrals. And then from the eligible referrals, the individuals at Myers Commons determine the suitability of that, you know, they'll take a look at the apartment. Sometimes people will say, "Gee, I want a bigger apartment," or "I want to be able to have a dog," or whatever it is that, you know, or my daughter doesn't want me to move from, you know, where they've, they're close. Sometimes people have made a transition, and it's working out for them, and even though they thought they wanted one thing, when it comes, comes to making the decision, they choose not to. So we'll go through those waiting lists, and as we get to the point where it's lower again, we'll open it up. And we've, you know, after talking with you, we'll certainly make sure that Darien gets that, any notices that relate to that.
Yeah, I think the information flow was just not there, so I thought that was important, you know, just so we had something even in...
We need, we should get that on Direct Connect, the DuPage Senior Services number and contact information on a routine basis. We should have that on their, on a regular basis.
The other, the other option that I would say, if you talk to one of your constituents and they're interested in a housing option, is that there also is an agency called Senior Home Sharing. They provide housing throughout DuPage County. A lot of their individuals, I think, are people who are perhaps widows or widowers, and, you know, they've lost their spouse, they're still kind of independent, but maybe they don't want to live alone, and they'll live in an apartment, a house with, everybody has their own bedroom, but it's a shared kind of thing. They get one meal per day that they eat as a congregate thing, but, you know, some people work, some people volunteer. These are, it's not a nursing home.
Yeah.
But it's, it's more like...
I've seen it advertised. How would, how would people reach that? Would that be reached through the Senior, DuPage Senior Services?
Senior Home Sharing, and there's actually a link to Senior Home Sharing on the DuPage Housing Authority website.
Okay. It sounds like there is a big need in DuPage County for this kind of housing. Is HUD the only party that gives you authority to build a new facility?
The, there are new facilities going up kind of all the time in the area. The main funder of programs that you're, that our seniors would be in need of is the agency called the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IDA. And developers get what's called tax credits for providing a certain percentage of their units as available to low-income, you know, individuals. And seniors often are the targeted population for these developments. I know that there are several being considered in DuPage County right now.
Already?
For development. There's also, funding also can come to programs through the Home Funds Program, which is administered through DuPage County, and, you know, I'm trying to think if CDBG does some of it. I think it's more the Home Funds than...
So your board?
Mm-hmm, yes.
The housing board?
Yes.
They can initiate a request to build a new facility?
We don't at this point, only because I think that the Housing Authority is not into project development at this point. We'll support a project, and if a project is put together by an outside group, a developer, a manager, or whatever, and they would come to the Housing Authority and say, "We're going to be seeking funds from IDA with a tax credit. In order to make this work, we're, we would be seeking X number of project-based vouchers." If we have the vouchers at the Housing Authority to support that development, we would have to do what's called a request for proposal. So I can't, for example, just give Mr. Seifert here, you know, my good buddy, 20 projects, you know, 20, 20 vouchers. I would have to say to everybody in the county, "We're going to, you know, have an RFP, and if you're interested in senior housing, give us your proposal." Those would be evaluated, and the ones with the most points would receive the vouchers.
So is that the only way the Housing Authority is dealing with this issue right now? They're not even trying to build anything that would be strictly senior housing?
Right, not, not at this point. We're not, we're not, we've not been a developer of buildings, okay? And as we found out when the Office of the Inspector General came in, the way that we did it even with Myers Commons was not quite the way we should have done it. So it's, there's, there's some problems with developing and being the voucher administrator at the same time. There's, they like to have a little separation there. But we were closely with the county and keeping involved with knowing where senior developments... developments or other low-income housing developments are springing up. We are a member of the DuPage County Continuum of Care that also takes a look at affordability of housing for people who are homeless and at risk of homelessness. So there's, there are many special populations out in the county, whether it's people with disabilities, seniors, or the homeless, who need affordable housing. It's a big challenge.
Yes, it is. I think more needs to be done, to be honest. But if you're relying on, if you're relying on developers to come forward to you to develop these projects, I mean, it's just, that's a tough way to go.
Except for that a number do contact us all the time.
Yeah.
But I think it's a matter of just constantly keeping the needs out there and communicating with the people who are in the development stage. There's also something called the Affordable Housing Breakfast. I don't know if any of you have ever been involved with that. But that's a group that's been going on for probably twenty-some years at Wheaton College. And it meets at least four times a year. And it's attended by bankers, realtors, people from social services, people who are all concerned with the development of affordable housing in our area. So we try to keep in contact. We try to take a look at where there are opportunities for development. Right now, this year, the Housing Authorities throughout the county or the country are kind of just trying to keep pace with cuts and things that are coming our way through sequestration and federal regs, et cetera.
Alderman, MacGyver?
So it sounds like you're not funded by local county taxes, but you are funded by federal taxes, tax dollars.
Sure.
Okay, so taxpayers do...
Oh, absolutely.
So if that's the case, then do you, say, DuPage County is limited. Do you work with other neighboring collar counties to try to find assistance for, say, someone who may live in DuPage but would be willing to move to Will County because there's affordable housing there? I mean, how does that work?
There is a process called portability. So once a person has a voucher, generally, especially after a year, they've got a voucher. In almost every location, well, in every location after a year, they can move with that voucher. So we do have a number of clients who, you know, have moved for a job. They get their voucher in DuPage County, but they get a job in Will County. They want to live in Will County so they don't have a lot of transportation costs. So they port their voucher to Will County. Will County will then administer the voucher. And DuPage County continues to pay the leasing costs, et cetera. So there is that possibility. And we actually have a lot of people, especially in the metropolitan area. You know, they go from Kane to Will, to Cook, to Kendall. It's all kind of merged, yes.
Do you interface with DuPage Pads?
I'm very familiar with them. We have a project with them. One of the, one of the project-based programs is for the homeless through DuPage Pads.
Yeah.
Most of the contact that I have with them comes through the Continuum of Care.
Yeah, I was at a breakfast last month. Been dicting, there were about three hundred people there. Mayors and state officials were there. And they talked about how they've grown just from housing people overnight, but now they actually provide mental health services and they actually house or find housing for people who are remediating and getting ready to enter back into the work world. And I just, you know, and they're looking, and they said they have housing that they find. And I just wondered if they worked with you on that.
They do. And the Department of Housing and Urban Development really is trying to encourage Housing Authorities to work with programs to help the homeless access vouchers. So for example, in DuPage County, when we develop our waiting list, one of the preference points that you can get is if you're in fact homeless. It doesn't, it doesn't help solve everything, but we do try to communicate regularly.
Well, it's nice to know that everybody's, you know, that you know what, you know, everybody's interfacing. Because you don't want one, you know, you'd want people working against one another in terms of solving the problem.
You know, the Continuum of Care in DuPage County is just a marvelous organization. The service providers, the members of the, you know, business and local communities, government, everybody works so well. We have a long and healthy tradition of collaboration and meaningful collaboration. We have committees to kind of jointly take a look at how to efficiently use our resources. It's really remarkable. I, in a previous job that I had, I had the opportunity to see a number of different continuums of care. And, you know, in one person's opinion, I think DuPage is one of the best functioning ones that I've seen. Because, you know, Pads, People's Resource Center, Metropolitan Family Services, DuPage County, Catholic Charities, you know, I mean, it goes on and on and on and on. The special interests that are represented around the table and how well everybody understands the resources that are available. So it means that when we do have a challenging family that comes to the Housing Authority, I can give our case managers names of other organizations to help that person go through. If we have, we had a job that we just, you know, hired a little filing clerk. And I was able to, you know, work a nice collaboration with 360 Youth Services that provides services to young adults and teenagers who are homeless. So I was able to take a job that for somebody else might have been kind of meaningless, give it to a homeless, you know, individual, child, who needs now, you know, something on their resume. So if they work with us for six months or eight months, whatever works in with their school schedule, it'll work great. And when they move on to a next job that they might have, I can get another, you know, fill it in. So we just constantly are looking for ways to support each other.
Okay. Chair, your call?
I think Alderman, MacGyver sort of asked this question, but I'm not quite sure we got the definite answer. At the time when Myers Commons came before us, I was the chairman of the Plan Commission. And I know at the time, there was sort of a tug-of-war going on. Should we allow this for senior housing? Or should we look at it as an expansion of our retail district to get more retail sales tax dollars into the community and that? And I know it was a very big tug-of-war at the time. And the one major selling point was that Myers Commons was going to be first for Darian residents, that there was going to be a priority given to them. And I believe Alderman, MacGyver asked that question before. But I think based on the way you've been discussing it, I think the answer is no. But I'm not, I didn't hear a definite no. It just sounded like we were nibbling around the edges of that question.
You know, it's really hard to respond because, number one, I wasn't associated with the Housing Authority at that time. I have not been able to find any kind of written transcript of what might have been said. What I can say...
We have it in our minutes.
Okay.
I will tell you, it was Mike Pizzuto that made that comment.
Okay, okay.
So I think that answers everything you need to know, right? Yeah.
What I'm saying is people quoted something other than HUD regulations. So Darian residents who are income-eligible and interested in residing at Myers Commons, the best thing that they could do at this point is to go to Myers Commons and put in an application. Now, the way it works with a Housing Authority is if I've reviewed applicants off of the Housing Authority waiting list, and there is no one who is either interested or eligible or whatever meets the criteria after a length of time, then they can go to the first one on the project's own waitlist. It doesn't happen often, but they would at least get their name in. If they get their name in there and our project waiting list opens up, you know, we're communicating regularly with them. And between one or the other of us, they could notify them and say, the project-based list is opening up. You need to get over to the Housing Authority and put in a formal application. Then they're on, they would be on both. That's the only way that we can do it. We cannot disregard other individuals who are not from your geographic area, who have signed up, been on the list, and are equally in need. There might have been something if, you know, way back when, they had changed an administrative plan some way or whatever. But whatever technical steps might have needed to do, to be done to strengthen that connection, they weren't done. They just weren't done. And I can't account for why that may or may not have happened. But it doesn't mean that there's no possibility for Darian residents to get it. So I think...
But I think the answer is no, there is no priority given to Darian residents.
There is no priority. And if there was a priority, it would have been in a point. It wouldn't, it would never have worked out where they would have instantly gone to the top of the list. That would have been a promise that was contrary to federal law. If, you know, if that was, you know, the impression, it was not one that was, can be supported by the law.
Yeah. They were made, the individuals...
Very definitely.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I recall it very clearly. And I gave you the name of the Stowe Group who made that promise to us, yes. Okay. I think we need to get more information from you. I think we can contact, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman, Belkey?
In our goal-setting session, we discussed about having that seniors' corner in the Neighbor's Magazine. So some of these resources and links could probably be put in there.
That's exactly what I was suggesting, yes.
You know, and I'd be happy to contact, you know, the county and see if there's a name or a, you know, a special person that, you know, should connect with you, who might be in charge of their communications that might help provide a good link.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
From the seniors, the senior case management at...
At your staff?
At DuPage County.
Oh.
They handle all of the senior referral network.
Okay. Yeah, we just need to get all that contact information that we can put in our Direct Connect and in our Neighbor's Magazine. Yes, Dan?
I had a question for Deborah. Deborah, in respect to your department, do you guys have any type of property maintenance programs to help out seniors? For example, leaf pickup, painting, fixing?
We don't do that.
No, the DuPage Senior Council does that.
Yeah, it's been very limited. That's why I thought if there was an opportunity...
We're the ones that cut the funding for that. That's why it's been limited to our seniors.
Don't you hate it? I hate funding cuts.
Yes, we all have to live with them.
There's a whole community because of it, yes.
I know. Well, okay. Do we have any more questions for Deborah? So I think staff can get in touch with Deborah to get as many phone numbers and contact names so we can get them into our Neighbor's Magazine and our Direct Connect. And Neil, Neil Christensen in the audience had his hand raised. Did you come out for this issue?
Yeah, two real quick questions. Number one, is this property on the tax rolls right now? Does the city of Darian, the schools, anything else get any money for this?
I really don't know because I'm not the property owner.
We'll have to address that with the...
And number two, you use an acronym. When your waiting list is exhausted, before you reopen it up, you go and ask people or you look for people that, you use an acronym. But the way I interpret it was people that basically are constantly a welfare.
Hmm, no. There's the regular, there is the waiting list that opened in 2010. So in order to be compliant, once the waiting list from the specific program, Myers Commons in this case, was exhausted, we needed to go through the existing list and find out if there were individuals who would be potentially eligible for that type of housing because they were over sixty-two, to see if they were income-eligible or interested. Now, I mean, there's, not everybody that's on that waiting list is a, you know, long-term poverty person. They might have signed up because they also, when it opened, were fifty-six and thought, well, I might be interested in senior housing. But in the end, we've gone through that whole list. So that's not even an issue anymore. At this point, we are on to the next project-based list that opened up in June of 2013 and closed in the end of September of 2013. We do not know at this point how quickly that list will deplete. We don't think it's going to be a long time, and we'll be opening it again.
I only ask those questions because my recollection, I think Mayor, you'd mentioned the same thing, that priority would be given to Darian senior residents.
And it was a priority that should have never been given because it wasn't true.
And especially if that property was taken off the tax rolls. I mean, that'd be commercial property potential there that we allowed this housing development to be built there. And if it's been removed, and I suspect it has been, from the tax rolls, that's a loss to the city, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak out.
Okay. That's something we have to check out.
Well, thanks for coming because, you know, that was the thing that really got to me was the fact that they had that opening and nobody knew about it. So there was that opportunity that just was missed because I think I called in October. And they're like, oh, you just missed it by a week. I'm like, are you kidding me? How did we even know about this?
Yeah.
And then I contacted city staff and they're like, we didn't know about it either. And I thought, well, here's a huge disconnect, you know, for our seniors to not even be aware of this, an opportunity that came and went, so.
Right. And I apologize for that. The next time we open it, we'll do a better job.
How do you communicate with the public at large?
In the papers. We've, it was in the papers, but like you say, maybe not in every paper.
A public notice.
And there was a public notice published.
A public hearing notice.
And it was, I mean, we tried to notify as many other organizations. But obviously, you know, the next time, maybe we'll put a note into the mayor's and manager's for, or whatever.
Yeah, possibility.
You know, there's other ways for us to take a look at it. And, you know, we can try and figure out what went well the last time and what didn't go well and do it better.
Okay. Alderman, Seifert?
Myers Commons does pay real estate taxes.
Okay, there you go.
I guess we got the answer, Neil, for you? Yeah. Okay, thank you, Deborah.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming out. Thank you. Under the mayor's report, I just want to say thank you to the Darian Historical Society for sponsoring the tree lighting ceremony. That is the kickoff for our holiday season. And it was a very nice event this year. And the weather even cooperated. It wasn't below zero for a change. So thank you to the Historical Society. Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
Just one item. There will be a meet and greet with the mayor on Monday, December the sixteenth at 6:00 PM in here in the Darian City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
Thank you. City Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. I just have two items. One, we did not have time during the work session, but we'll be asking consent item H to be removed and discussed under New Business. Alderman and MacGyver received an email on Sunday from the resident who has petitioned for this. And we were in contact with our insurance company today. And we've made one minor revision that was on a handout.
Yes.
Regarding a hold harmless agreement. But anyway, we needed a little more discussion on that.
All righty. Yeah, that, okay.
It's actually item G.
It was, it was going to be item G. So that's going to be item D under New Business now. Okay, is that, is that the end of your report?
I have one more item. Everybody recalls that last week was our last free yard waste pickup in leaves. There's a number of leaves that are still out there. And we had a lot of calls today from residents who had put leaves out. At this point, the last two years, the garbage company, Advanced Disposal, would take those bags if they were stickered properly. They have a new supervisor who relooked at our contract, and the yard waste ends at the end of November. So they laid off a number of drivers. But we've worked an arrangement where they'll be out this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, for one last pickup. Not a free pickup, but residents would need to put stickers on their yard waste bags. And we have a notice that we'll be giving as we're, we have Public Works employees or CSO out in the field. They'll be handing notices to residents that have yard waste bags out with no sticker, letting them know that they need to put a sticker on. And the charge or the proposal from the garbage company was a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, but it will be reduced by the number of stickers. So if they collect that amount of stickers, it would be no invoice. So it's a little hard to know at this time how many residents actually have put out yard waste. But the tricky part was, the company has taken it in the past, and this year, they didn't take it, so, which is again, what the contract said, so we still need to talk to them a bit more about why we didn't receive notice, that they were doing something differently than they had as a practice in the past, but, so we'll be putting out a direct connect, so residents should, i- if they want to get their last weeks of yard waste picked up, which is again, a lot of leaves, they need to put it out Tuesday night, and then the crews will be out Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday picking up. Okay.
Very good. Let's move on to department head information and questions. Chief? Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and City Council, residents. As you know, that since my arrival here, and since the department started to disseminate statistics, we've wrestled with the, the idea of how much information and what format the information should be in. We think we've nailed it, we passed out a, a document, a monthly report at the last council meeting, and we think we've nailed it, we're certainly open to some-
Chief, I'm sorry, we actually emailed that last one, we handed it out to the committee, but the council emailed, I'm sorry.
We're certainly open to some additional suggestions, so I just wanted to go over briefly what the format is going to be. It's basically a three-part format, and the first part of the format is always going to be some situational awareness, citizen crime tip-type information. We, we have, our next newsletter that will be out this week, will talk about tips for holiday crime. At the form, at the forefront of that will be a gift card scam that's going on now. Most folks don't know that on the back of your gift card, when you purchase a gift card, there's a black strip, underneath that black strip, there is a, an activation code. So what happens is criminals go into the local store where the gift cards are being sold, look at the card, scratch off the black strip, contact the credit card company, give them the activation code, and start taking money off of the card. So when you give it to somebody, they get a gift card that has no money on it, and so you, the, the best way to avoid it is to make sure that you hold on to your gift receipt for the gift card, so that you can prove that, prove that you did purchase it and didn't activate it, it was activated prior to the purchase. So that's the kind of information that'll be in the upcoming newsletter, and the format will always be that that's at the front part. We've also talked extensively about greater community engagement, engagement, and opening up the police department, kind of more humanizing the police department. So the second portion of the, the newsletter will be the inner workings of the police department, as much as we can reveal without giving up tactical advantage, but it'll be some information about the personal, the personal well-being of the officers, some of the new programs and new protocols and new policies, things like that. And in the final phase of the, of the news, final portion of the newsletter will be statistical breakdown, and we think, number one, that the statistical breakdown is valuable for the, the supervisory command staff, but it's also valuable to the citizens and to the council, so that you understand why the, the decision-making pilot process that we've undertaken is what we're doing. We're moving towards a management accountability model, and what, what it ultimately does is it places a higher degree of accountability and responsibility and authority on the command staff, the supervising sergeants and what have you. And so there's a lot of decision-making that goes into that, and so you'll have some of the same data that, that the sergeants will be having to make their decisions, so. That's basically it.
Okay.
That concludes our-
That's the report, yeah.
Yes, that's the report, and we hope that if you see something in there that you think that needs changing, you'll offer it up as a suggestion, we can, we're certainly flexible enough to make some changes if need be. Thank you very much.
Did you, did you want to mention anything about the recent occurrences at all?
You know, we, we've had three robberies in, in town in the last three weeks. Two of the robberies were armed robberies, we made an arrest in one of those, and we're conducting a follow-up to find out if we can identify, to, to link the other two. The two robberies that were around Cass and Plainfield were both armed robberies, and one, the person displayed a weapon, and in the other, he inferred a weapon. The one, the most recent one was the one where a weapon was inferred, that subject is in custody. There was a, a third robbery that was undertaken without a weapon, where the individual entered a, a local gas station and essentially gave the clerk a big bear hug and forced the clerk to open the cash register and took a sum of money. But we are actively investigating those, here again, vigilance is, is the key. One final, final comment that I have is that we, we continue to have, experience burglaries, residential burglaries, and burglaries to the motor vehicle, where vehicles are being left unlocked, and this is just like an open opportunity, an, an open door, where, where either we're leaving our valuables in plain view, and the car's unlocked, or just leaving the car unlocked, and we really have to do a better job. We've significantly reduced burglaries to the motor vehicle, but we can do a lot better in denying the opportunity to the offenders. And similarly, in residential burglaries, we've stemmed the flow that, that existed a couple of months ago, where we'd had nine burglaries over a two-month period, we've stemmed that flow, we, we continue to work with our sister agencies and Ru's Burglary Task Force, but here again, vigilance is the key, not, not giving the opportunity to, to the folks who would commit those crimes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening, City Council, and our viewing residents at home. This evening, what I want to do, present to you is a little report, what I refer to as little report card. That report card involves our actual costs of projects, major projects, that our department has completed this year. Again, this is referred to as budget comparisons to actual expenditures. First of all, the department oversees approximately eight point five to ten million dollars a year in the overall budgets, which includes municipal services, community development, and the water division. With that said, we're already beginning for next year's projects, we're starting to look at pricing, as well as going out to competitive pricing, and two of those items are on your agenda this evening. In getting to the reports, I'm just going to highlight some of the areas that I felt are, are important, and if there's questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those questions. The first one is the Emerald Ash Program. The Emerald Ash Program basically was, started out with a hundred and ninety thousand dollar budget, along with another additional fifty thousand dollar budget, and at the end of the day, we ended up requiring, requesting an additional expenditure of seventy-seven thousand. With that said, the actual program on the treatment, staff was able to come in under the seventy-nine, under to an amount of seventy-nine thousand, but again, that was further reduced due to the expenditure because of the Emerald Ash borer and the trees that needed to be removed. So the bottom line is, we were still, ended up with a savings of approximately twenty-six hundred dollars. Again, and that's a lot of credit to our arborist, John Carr, did a great job, his whole dedication to the entire summer was injecting the Emerald, excuse me, injecting ash trees and determining which trees were to be salvaged, and which trees needed to come down, also communicating with the residents and explaining the programs. Again, John did a great job out there. Our next portion I'd like to talk about is the sidewalk program, the sidewalk or the concrete program overall. The concrete program does include the sidewalk program, the curb and gutter, as well as this year's Elm Street sidewalk project. In a nutshell, the basically, the budget, overall budget was four hundred and twenty-three thousand, what City Council had approved due to the bid openings was four hundred and twenty thousand. The actual expenditure of the entire program was four hundred and twelve thousand. Again, we had a net savings of approximately ten thousand dollars, or two point five percent. Drainage improvement projects, which have been, you know, very popular and a very debated topic, if you want to say. This year, we had drainage improvement projects for Seventy-Ninth Street and Farmingdale Drive. We also had a Richard Road project, which, which was completed in-house, Roger Road, Eleanor Place, as well as Brook, Brookbank and Holly. In respect to all those, we had a total of eight hundred and eight thousand dollars that was budgeted. City Council allowed, from the bid opening, seven hundred and seventy thousand, and the actual overall jobs came in at seven hundred and sixteen thousand, again, realizing a savings of approximately sixty-two thousand dollars, or close to thirty-two percent. Now, while we say thirty-two percent, many of those items had a contingency in them, we were able to find ways to reduce costs or not utilize certain materials. One example of that was when it was identified that there was very rich topsoil that was being excavated from one of the projects, we happened to call a local vendor, who ended up taking the topsoil, and no cost to us, which was basically a ten thousand dollar savings. So again, those are some examples of things that staff looks at. This year, I'd like to congratulate Dan Silvato, along with his team in overseeing the project, Dave Feld was part of that, Jeff Cornelius was part of that. And let me just back up a second in respect to the side of the concrete program, Pete Kaliniak, he's been our concrete liaison now for the last couple of years, he's really done a great job, so we really feel, you know, proud of our department, and where certain individuals are going, you know, in respect to taking charge and pride and ownership to some of these programs. Also, one of the more popular programs is the rear yard drainage programs. This year, we did do four drainage projects, four rear yard drainage projects. Again, every single one was a hundred, completed with a hundred and ninety percent satisfaction from residents, while we were slightly over an amount of sixteen hundred dollars on the overall of a sixteen dollars, it's a, it's a minor budget, sixteen thousand dollar budget. Residents have also put in twenty thousand dollars of their money. So, again, a very worthwhile project, and we've accomplished some very, very great things, and especially one, I believe it was on Sixty-Ninth Street, where a resident basically had a pond in his backyard, probably nine months out of the year. Again, that was a, a project that he now has no water in his backyard at all. Again, I'd like to put kudos out to our superintendent for overseeing that specifically, and overseeing the vendors that were associated with that project. In respect to the overall, the amount budgeted, when we began this process back last February, February, March, we basically had a budget of three point, almost four million dollars of that after the bids came in, and all our ingredients came in for proposals, costs, quotes, et cetera. The City Council approved three point eight million dollars, or almost three point nine million dollars. The actual expenditures for these projects were three point seven million dollars, and the bottom line is that the department was able to realize a two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar savings overall, which equates to about a five point six five percent savings, which will be used going back into the general funds or capital projects for anticipated projects upcoming. With that said, if there's any questions in respect to that, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, thanks, Dan.
I have one more quick comment, um, just to remind Darien residents, our tree trimming program is starting, and we have a private property tree trimming program. Again, I want to remind all the residents that the vendor this year is Homer Tree Care again, and some of the pricing for trimming, for example, sixty-five dollars for a front yard tree to be trimmed, a hundred and forty dollars for a backyard tree to be trimmed. Pricing for removal is what's referred to as diameter by height, or inches, diameter inches, those prices are twenty-eight dollars per inch for the front, forty dollars for the back. Stump grinding, stump grinding is fifty dollars for the front, seventy-five dollars for the back. Residents are requested to contact Ryan, and that's R-Y-A-N, at homer tree dot com, or they may contact him via telephone, that's A-one-five, eight-three-eight, zero-three-two-zero. It's really an excellent program for residents that have deficient trees, or trees that do need trimming overall, and keep in mind that the deadline for this program is February fifteenth. Again, we've been advertising it via direct connect and some of our other media portals. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the treasurer's report. Alderman, treasurer, correct?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this evening I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, the amount of one million, twelve thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended November twenty-eighth, and the amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, for a total to be approved of one million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shauer, seconded by Alderman Seifert. Any questions for the, for the treasurer? The role plays? Shauer?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes. You don't have another report, right? You don't have another report, okay. Let's move to standard committee reports, to any of the chairman head reports. Alderman Shauer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, our next admin finance meeting will be held Monday, January sixth, two thousand and fourteen, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Alderman, Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The municipal services committee approved the minutes of the October twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen minutes, and submitted those to the clerk, and the next meeting is scheduled for December sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, and then there'll be a second meeting on December twenty-third, at 6:30 in the council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman, MacGyver?
We have a conflict. We have a police committee meeting at the same time in the same place, so, I don't know, Chief, could we-
What, what date was that?
December sixteenth.
We can meet upstairs.
Well, you have coffee with the mayor, or-
My meet and greet, I can take any residents back in my office.
Or we could, you know what, maybe we could have our police committee, committee meeting in the training room at the police department, how about that?
We've got, we've got plenty of places you can go. You want to do it, you sure?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. So then, the next meeting of the, the police committee-
Police committee.
Will be on Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at 6:00 PM in the police training room across the lot in the police department, pending agenda items, so.
Okay, so you might not even have to meet? Okay.
Who knows?
All right, let's move on to questions and comments, agenda-related. We, we have, is anyone in the audience want to speak to any of the items on the agenda this evening?
Of course, I'll never pass up the opportunity to speak on a VFW item, but, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, residents at home, my name is Matt Goodwin, I'm the commander of the Darien VFW, and before you tonight are two items, as you know, and as were discussed in the work session earlier, and I wanted to kind of address some of those. But I would be remiss if I didn't start off by thanking the city and the council for all of the consideration and the time that we've been given in the Heritage Plaza up until this point. Had it not been for the generosity of the city and the council, we wouldn't have a home. We would have struggled this past week to collect the donations that we did for the Washington residents and the tornado victims down there, it would have been very difficult as we experienced back when Harrisburg happened, and we collected those donations. But I want to address specifically the waiver of the liquor license fee, and I want to start off by saying, as, as was mentioned in the email, that was included in the packet, this isn't something that we had originally intended to come and ask for, a waiver of the fee. We had intended to be good tenants of the center, and, and, and thanks for the consideration that we've been given, pay the fee without question at all. As we mentioned, when the goal-setting session took place, and the timeline for demolition of that plaza had been accelerated, we felt that it was necessary to come and ask at that point for some leeway, for some consideration of waiving that fee, because frankly, the, the five hundred and eighty-three dollars, while it may seem minor in many cases, and to many of the other nonprofits, could make the difference between whether or not we open our doors at that location, and are able to do our operations, instead of simply having a meeting there once a month. It's difficult for us to, to, for people to fathom that five hundred and eighty-three dollars would make a significant difference to us, but that's five hundred and eighty-three dollars now, if we don't open our doors, or, or, given the little amount of time that we have to open our doors with the accelerated schedule, that we're taking out of our programs for the community, and we're taking out of the scholarship programs that we offer to local schoolchildren, and the programs that we offer to veterans and their family members. And we understand that the liquor license is a privilege, it's not something that, that is just simply given out to anybody that comes in and asks, that it is something that, that we have to follow the process and, and be a good business organization in town. But the ordinance also allows for the liquor commissioner, yourself, Madam Mayor, and the council, some, certain levels of leeway, it's not simply black and white. There, there is a lot of gray area there that allows for the type of leniency and the type of consideration that we're asking for. And that same leeway, that same leniency shows tolerance for businesses that come into town that are opening halfway, halfway through a liquor license year, or maybe in need of some special consideration, as has been given to, to other businesses in town. And we want to reiterate again that we're talking- And we want to reiterate again that we're talking about $583 here. That seems pretty small in comparison to a lot of the numbers that Mr. Gombach came and reported earlier, and cost savings to a lot of these projects. It's my understanding that liquor license fees that are paid go into those types of projects and those type of fundings. And here, through the great work of Mr. Gombach's staff, the city's been able to realize a savings on a lot of those projects. And I don't think that waiving $583 here will create a hardship for the city. Because of that shortened timeline, and because of the consideration that we're asking, we understand that there is a fear of setting a precedent here. And I don't think, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, I don't think that anybody's going to shame the city or going to look down upon the city if they give a nonprofit organization that's been in town, been in this city for 28 years, and has done the type of work that we've done in the city, a little bit of consideration in this matter, I don't think anybody's going to look down on the city for doing that. And furthermore, by allowing this waiver, by granting this waiver to us, you're going to help cement that image that Darien is a veteran-friendly community. We had the lady here from the housing board talk about veterans' housing. Veterans' unemployment and veterans' homelessness right now is rampant, and it's far above the national averages. And that $583 is $583 more that we have to help those veterans get jobs, to help those veterans get homes, in the best way that we possibly can. So please, I'm asking, help us, help those veterans that are coming home. And again, I want to thank the council, Madam Mayor, and the staff for all the consideration and the time that we've been given. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to address the city council? All right, I'd like to, is, did any of the aldermen have any items that they wanted to agenda-related discuss now, or we can discuss them? And actually, it would only pertain to the consent agenda items, because we'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss the other items that are under new business. With that said, then, I will just move to old business, and there being no old business, I'll move to the consent agenda and explain to the viewing audience and the audience here that we have, we are removing two items from the consent agenda and moving them to new business this evening. The first item was, the original item C under consent agenda is being moved to new business as item C. And item H, that was on the consent agenda, which we changed to item G, is now going to be item D under new business. So with that said, I will read the items that are still on the consent agenda for the viewing audience. We have a motion to authorize the city administrator to move forward with filling the role of the full-time community service officer with three part-time positions. Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use to the Darien zoning ordinance for a drinking establishment. Wait a minute, hold it. Yes, okay. That item was not removed. That item is staying under the consent agenda. Item C is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title 5A, Chapter 5-7-3, general provisions and regulations permitted obstructions in required yards, and Chapter 12-4-1, noise of the Darien City Code, for, it's a tax amendment regarding generators. Item D is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-23, a copy of the ordinance to provide licenses of the Darien City Code. Item E is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engineering agreement with Christopher B. Burke, Engineering for Pavement Corrings, for our proposed 2014 street maintenance program, in an amount not to exceed $9,750. Item F is a motion to approve a resolution to enter into an agreement with Christopher B. Burke, Engineering for the 2014 Street Maintenance Program, in an amount not to exceed With that said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belkey? The roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shauer?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes. All the items on the consent agenda have been approved. Let's move to new business, and the first item is a motion to approve an ordinance, to approve an ordinance levying taxes for the general and special corporate purposes for our fiscal year that starts on May 1, 2000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's right, okay. What am I thinking? We're always one year back. May 2013, and ending on April 30, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belkey? Discussion?
Just a brief comment.
Yeah, give the numbers out, so that people can understand what we're approving.
Just in summary, the ordinance addresses a number of, just open that up, of tax levies that would go on our property owner's tax bills. In comparison to last year, what the city council had asked for, we're not, the, I'm sorry, received, the city council's not increasing that from what we received last year, including the abatement that the city council approved last year. So if a resident were to receive their, well, let me just take a step back. The city council will have an opportunity again to discuss abatements, as we do every year when we get into the budget cycle. But at this point, this levy is exactly what the city council had levied for last year. So the complication gets a little bit if the city council isn't, if we, the city doesn't have the ability to abate taxes against, as it did last year. A resident may see that tax go up, but again, that was only due to the abatement this past year, which is always the challenging part about a tax abatement, and we talked about that at the committee and council level. The second ordinance is a special service area for Terra Hill, which has a small amount, only $5,000 for maintenance of the wetlands in the Terra Hill subdivision.
All right, but the numbers that we are approving tonight for the general fund and special, and the police pension is $1,629,140, which, and in addition to that, is the bonding, the bonds that we do in the amount of $502,568, for a total of $1,629,140. I got that wrong. I'm sorry, I included, the first number I gave was wrong.
Yeah, I'm sorry. In terms of the, in terms of the numbers, the amount that will be levied for the general corporate purposes is $433,113 for the police pension fund, which is based on the police actuarial study. That levy amount will be $1,196,027. And there are four bonds that are outstanding, one in the amount of $104,125, $192,631. The 2007 Geo bond is $497,000. And the 2008 Capital Projects bond is $202,256. For the total levy for all funds of $2,618,152. And then again, the abatements will be discussed during the budget process.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? The roll, please. Seifert?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shauer?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Item has been approved. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance for the levying assessment of taxes for the same fiscal year, May 1 of 2013 through April 30 of 2014, for the special service area known as Terra Hill. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shauer, seconded by Alderman Seifert. This is $5,000 assessment is for the maintenance of the wetlands in Terra Hill, and it is assessed only to the residents of the Terra Hill subdivision. Any discussion? The roll, please. Shauer?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The motion has been approved. Item C is a consideration of a motion to approve a resolution waiving the liquor license fee charged to the Darien VFW for the period between December 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014, in an amount of $583.33. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belkey? Alderman Shauer?
No.
Treasurer, call.
Everybody's afraid to talk about this topic. Matt, you know, I love you dearly, I love your organization dearly, I contribute to your national organization annually, and you did a wonderful job in your presentation. And I don't object to anybody in their own right donating to whatever charities they feel are appropriate. I believe we have a lot of outstanding organizations in the city, whether it's the VFW, the Lions Club, the Historical Society, there's many of them. And I think they all believe, and I think all of them really do, an outstanding job for a lot of the residents in the city. And I don't mean to imply that you don't, but I think by this item being approved for you, it just essentially means the city is essentially making a donation on behalf of the residents of the city of $583. So I think just the residents and the aldermen that are voting on this just need to realize that impact. The $583, you're right, Dan saved us wonderful amounts of money this year. We try and take the money he saves us, and we try and use it in five different places over and over again if we can. There's a lot of people with ditch projects that have water in their backyards that say, hey, it's important for the money to be used there, too. So it's nothing personal, I hope you realize that. And I only bring up the topic in terms of what's fair, in terms of everybody that we really have under our umbrella, we're responsible to 22,000 residents. So that's the only reason I brought up the topic at all. There is another resident, there's another tenant in that plaza. Again, if the intent is to make good in the event that we don't have that plaza up for the entire time of your tenancy there, I mean, then he would be within his right, and I think we would appropriately owe you and that tenant a refund of whatever the unused portion of that liquor license is. The difference is, he's paid his upfront, and if we kick him out early, then I think he would be, should be entitled to that back. In your case, you're coming in midstream, and we're prorating it for that period, and if you did move out earlier, definitely would be appropriate to abate that amount. So that's all. I'm not trying to make a decision one way or the other, but I mean, I think it is, the council needs to recognize that it is a contribution on behalf of the city to the VFW if it has, is handled that way. And I think all the residents, you do a lot of good, and I think a lot of people should donate to your organization. The question is, should it be done at this level, or should it be done at the individual level in my mind?
Alderman Seifert?
I would just clarify that, we're already treating the VFW differently, and not the same as everybody else, because they're not paying rent at the Heritage Plaza. So, you know, we've already done that once.
We indicated that we would not be out of pocket anything.
Right.
And their indication, even according to the memo, was they wanted even to us to pay their legal fees, some of their out-of-pocket costs, which now they have rescinded. I realize they're not asking for that. But, I mean, if another organization, again, there's plenty of organizations, if there's other organizations that came to us and wanted some of the available space there, I mean, I think it does set that precedent, that I would have a hard time arguing that, why isn't the Lions Club entitled to some of the vacant space there, or the Historical Society, or any of them that come to us for that? I'm not saying I disagree with what we did for them, but I'm saying if we do it for one, why do we do, I mean, we haven't been asked by the others at this point, I agree with that. And I don't object to what we did for them, the space is available, wasn't being used, it is absorbing some of our overhead in terms of the utilities and that, so I think it is a win-win in that case.
Alderman Belzak?
Yeah, I think the, certainly the vacant space argument, that ship has already sailed, it's already been granted, and like you said, we're not out of pocket anything. Two other things regarding this, one, we routinely waive Class A raffle licenses for organizations that request it. So if you're calling this a contribution, then we contribute to those organizations as well. And as far as precedent goes, I can't imagine that another non-for-profit service organization that's renting property from the city of Darien, in which the city of Darien wants to take it back to expand something, is going to happen again. So I really don't think it creates any precedent.
Alderman Belkey?
Also, if I recall correctly, the Darien Women's Club is using some of that space as well, in, not that exact space, but another location for storage in that.
The old dry cleaner spot, we have probably a couple of racks of some inventory, whatever it is you might keep, that we've made available that, while it's empty, that the organization could keep there, yes.
Right, so, and also with this, I think the difference, too, is that, you know, it's kind of a bundle. You know, we did the free run type of thing, and then here, you know, the city's the one driving, basically forcing out the other businesses as well, but we went through the journey in the beginning, you know, with you as a temporary basis with all your risks, and I think this just goes along with that.
Alderman Shauer?
This is, I kind of concur, and actually, I do concur with Alderman Belzak, this is not a precedent. The reason being is, we own that building, we do know what time we're going to end up asking the residents to leave. This is the only nonprofit organization in that location, and we're just waiving this one-time fee for $563 or whatever it is. We're not laying a precedent in this situation. It's not going to have a situation where we're going to come back with another, you know, you know, company or another nonprofit asking for this in the future. We are under the assumption that we are going to move these people on out, we're going to redo this building. We own the building, this is not a precedent. So in this situation, I don't think it'd be even, I don't even think it's a major issue in any way, so.
Alderman Kenny?
I've got nothing, Mayor. I think Matt spoke eloquently about it. I think, you know, Alderman Belzak has a good point, that it's a unique situation. Probably you're not going to see a precedent. I myself, you know, personally, don't ever like hearing somebody say that, either you do this, or we're not going to be able to open our doors. I, one of businesses did it, you know, not so long ago before I was on a council, I didn't like it then, I don't like it now, but, you know, I am going to, I am going to say, yeah.
Anyone else want to speak to the issue? Then let's take the roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shauer?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The motion has been approved. The next item, item D is a motion to approve a resolution to permit limited accessory structures and limited recreational activities on certain city of Darien-owned properties located immediately east of the Darien Town Center. And I believe we added, we added, where did it go? Okay. In this, in this resolution, we've added all of the home addresses along Welton Avenue who can participate in this, in this resolution, to, on our Lot 3 of the Darien Town Center, referred to as an undisturbed buffer area. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman MacGyver? Seconded by Alderman Seifert? Discussion?
Mayor, just as background, we distributed a revised resolution today. Alderman MacGyver received a email from the resident, Mr. Udine, who approached the city council at the last council meeting, requested consideration on two issues. One issue had to do with the million-dollar liability, and the other issue had to do with, he was requesting that we not require them, the residents, or him in this case, to be named as additional insured, or us as additional insured on their policy. And today, we talked to Irma, our risk management agency, and they made two suggestions. One is item four on the resolution we handed out and distributed today, and basically what they're saying is that the city of Darien shall be named as additional insured. With the addition, we said, or the property owner shall forward the city a letter from their insurance agent's branch manager stating that the whole harmless, the whole harmless indemnity agreement would be considered an insured contract under their liability policy. And we took that directly from Irma, that language, and that's fine for Irma, and we were in agreement with that. What we did not want to compromise on was the million-dollar limits. We recognize that in the case of the one resident, a shed on a property, probably doesn't We recognize that in the case of the one resident, a shed on a property probably doesn't bring a great amount of risk, but this is open now to do other things on those properties, and our insurance company, or our risk management agency, has recommended we maintain our million-dollar liability limit from the homeowner.
Mr. Udine has provided us with information that his policy's $500,000, so this would require him to increase his policy to $1 million?
Yes.
That's correct, yes.
He did say his is at $500,000, yes.
Yes, yeah, I saw that.
So it would require some additional insurance on his part for this.
All right. Has he been made aware of that?
Yes.
He was copied on the, I haven't heard from him since.
Scott talked to him today, he was unable to come tonight. And he's still requesting that we reduce.
To move forward.
To reduce the liability limits in the amount of $500,000. And obviously, if something were to happen there, and somebody, you know, got hurt on their property, he would, his insurance company would provide up to a $500,000 claim, and then if we were also involved in any litigation, we would end up, you know, responsible for things above and beyond that. Now, again, I can't, I can't picture that this brings a great amount of risk, it's a shed on the property, but again, as you talked to our risk management agency, who they are on the side of conservative, they suggested we just stick with that amount, because the claims have increased, you know, over the years, and a million dollars is not a lot of money anymore for litigation.
Brian, I do have one question, and what I requested was that the city do their due diligence, which I believe they did with Irma. You know, I think that's, that was a fair assessment, and I read their response, and I understand. Before this came up, that is Darien-owned property, and it still remains Darien-owned property, if something were to happen, obviously, on that property, and someone just were to sue Darien, is that the property, the level of insurance that Darien holds as well for that?
No, we have, our limits are up near $10 million, if I'm not mistaken, now through Irma. We have very high, high limits with small amount of deductibles on claims. I'm not sure if we're at eight anymore, Alderman, I would have to check that limit, but we do ourselves have high limits.
Yeah, and this really came up, and I thought that it was, it's actually, I think, a value for the residents that have had to endure. Home Depot, as a neighbor, with respect to the truck traffic, with the generator noise and so forth, this has been ongoing, and I think this seems like a fair compromise, and I think it's going to help other residents that are in his situation, so I think the staff are going through the, you know, moving this forward so quickly as well.
So you're in agreement with our standing on the $1 million?
Yeah, I would defer to the Irma's recommendation on that.
Alderman, Treasury Record.
The attorneys on the council can probably address this better than I can, but what we're asking for is a $1 million umbrella. If he has $500,000 under his present policy, your existing homeowner's policy has a base liability coverage, correct me if I'm wrong, guys? So the $500,000 base would still remain. This requires him to go out and get an overriding umbrella policy for a million dollars. Generally, they're not that expensive, in the range of about $300, $350 a year. You buy them typically in multiples, pulls of a million dollars. So we theoretically would have $1.5 million worth of coverage if there was some sort of liability on this. That's generally the way the umbrella policies work, is my understanding.
I think a lot of people, if you have like a swimming pool or something like that in your house, you generally have that kind of a policy anyway.
And in order to get a $1 million umbrella, usually you have to have a half-million-dollar base. Some people might only have a $100,000 liability base, but in order to even get the umbrella, you would have to step it up to half a million dollars, just mechanically.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, Dan, I know when this came before the council, the resident was requesting to put a shed there, but maybe just for the home audience, you could mention what is included in this, in this resolution, because it's more than the sheds now.
Depending on the decision of the City Council this evening, there's an opportunity for up to, for up to eight residents to have an opportunity, what's referred to as Lot 3, or property that is currently owned by the city of Darien behind Home Depot. And with that said, residents are able to install or put up sheds, gazebos, recreational activities, including playsets, bocce ball courts, and again, while there are some provisions, some of those provisions there include that residents cannot take down trees that are alive, if any dead trees are on the property, and the resident wants to place the structure on there, they'll have the ability to remove it at their expense, along with some other items. Now, all these residents, and I believe there's eight of them in here, all eight residents, pending the City Council decision, will be receiving letters in regards to this decision and the use of the property. So that's pretty, that's it in summary.
So they'd all know that you have to have a million-dollar policy, umbrella policy, to even venture onto that property, use it?
That is correct.
Dan, do they have to get a permit to construct that as well? So the city would know exactly what they're putting on that property as well?
There's a whole protocol involving a permit and the layout and specific use.
If there's no further discussion, the roll, please. MacIver.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Seven ayes. The motion has been approved. Let's move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from the council. Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please bear with me, this, I've been asked to read something from the chairman of the food basket program for the Darien Lions Club. It said, "This year's committee is again planning for our annual food basket program. Last year, with the support of community businesses, organizations, and schools, we were able to provide hams, turkeys, dairy products, produce, and canned food to nearly 200 families in Darien and nearby communities. This represented 460 children and 425 adults whose lives are brightened through our efforts. This year, the needs appear to be even greater. Over the years, funding for this project has been supplemented by generous donations from many Darien citizens. We ask that residents again consider making a donation to this project. The cost to sponsor a family is $75, and checks can be made payable to the Darien Lions Club Foundation, so your tax, your donation is tax deductible. Food and gift distribution will take place on Saturday, December 21st, from the Darien Park District Headquarters. Packing of groceries will take place Friday night, December 20th. This is a project that the Darien Lions Club undertakes every year. This has grown tremendously, and this we do in concert with the Park District's assistance with regard to toys and wrapping of toys, and now the Women's Club has joined in the effort in terms of soap products and cleaning products. So this is one of those projects, again, where there's numerous organizations, primarily headed by the Lions Club. Probably runs, probably runs us, Tom, probably between $12,000 and $15,000 a year to do this. And these, those are funds that come from our humanitarian fund. But the $75 per family cost assists us in meeting those needs. And 200 families is the top limit, we probably could serve 250 to 300 if, with the need that's there, but we limit it to 200. If residents want to participate, and they want to send a check to the Darien Lions Club Foundation, they should mail that to City Hall, they address it to the Darien Lions Club Foundation. I believe it's, what, 1701 Plainfield Road, Darien, Illinois.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman MacIver.
Joe, are you looking for volunteers to help like pack or wrap gifts and so forth?
The Women's Club is going to be wrapping the gifts this year. Kathy told me that they were going to be doing that, I think they're doing that Thursday night, Wednesday night or Thursday night, maybe 10.
Usually on Wednesdays.
Yeah, but what the, what we really could appreciate would be packing of groceries on Friday night, and surely delivery, when you have 200 deliveries that have to be made, you know, that requires a lot of people, and when you see this, I mean, we're bringing like six, seven bags of groceries plus toys to every family. So when my group goes out, we take about eight or nine families, and we go in three vans, but it takes about 100 people to get this.
Who should they contact for volunteering?
Ralph Beardsley. Ralph Beardsley is the chairman this year, John Galan is part of it as well, as is Wayne Charnak, Lou Bedeau, Don Coslino, they're all heading this effort this year.
Because I know that at Montini High School, their kids are always looking for service hours, and I think the last time that there was something with the Lions Club, they did make, I was there when they were making the announcement, saying that, you know, they can contact the Darien Lions Club to volunteer.
We have a lot of children Saturday who, on that, December 21st, who will be earning confirmation hours by delivering groceries, so yes, we will sign documents saying that they participated.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the aldermen? Is anyone in the audience that wanted to address the council on any items? Then I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Seifert. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All right, got 9:20.
You're welcome, good luck to you.
Thanks, thank you.
Good luck to you.